I have Marcus's meeting is now being streamed, but there we go.
Okay, everyone, thank you for bearing with us. Again, if you are a councilman and you cannot control your own audio, please let me know. And for everyone else, if you could just stay muted, that will help us the most. We are live on YouTube and we are recording. Okay, everyone, thank you for bearing with us. Again, if you are a councilman and you cannot control your own audio, please let me know. For everyone else, if you could just stay muted, that will... Just in case that's anybody in the council.
There's a box in the middle of the screen that will not go away.
Really can't do.
Okay, good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us for our virtual city council meeting of May the 5th, 2020. We are currently streaming live on YouTube as well as on Zoom. And if you're having technical difficulties, we'll try to help you. So we all got to be a little patient and try to walk people through it, but it seems like we got everybody good. Just so you know what I see on my screen, I have three sets of screens of councilpeople, department heads, and those that are logged in from home. So just kind of want to give you a sense of what I'm looking at. I think we should start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So now that you all seated, if we have a flag here, so Mr. Viscanti, I don't think you've ever led us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Why don't you lead us in the flag?
My pleasure. Ready? Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
And Councilman Palma has a short prayer.
Sure. Let's all pray today. Father God, we humble ourselves before you. Father, we pray all together today and understand it has been very hard for a lot of people. Many of them are no longer with us. We thank you because we have good faith and our loved ones still with us. Give strength to those who have lost their loved ones and are longer with them. Let us to understand that without you, things going to be tough. Father, forgive our sins and give us the wisdom and the knowledge to understand that you are the true God, the living God, that everything is going to be okay with you. And if you are by your side, we all going to be fine. Father, bless all the nurses, doctors, police, the fire department, and all of those who are in the front line. Keep them safe and healthy. Give them a strength and let us all become one like you are one. Bring peace and joy to this world and let your name to be glorified. So this pray in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen. God bless you.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman. With where we're going to work the meetings, I'm going to call the roll and then we know I'll work our way through the agenda until we get to the items and then Councilman Cavo will read the item into the record. And then for the public comment by email, we'll have Taylor O'Brien read the various correspondences that have come in for review by the council. So I'm just going to call the roll. Just unmute yourself. Give me a here or a very vigorous wave. So we'll start with Councilman Alz is here. Councilman Bizet is here.
Here.
Yep. Councilman Mike Esposito.
Present.
Councilman Warren Levy.
Present.
Councilman Salvatore.
Present.
Councilwoman Stanley. Councilman Tabersek. Councilman Fox.
Present.
Councilman Priola.
Here.
Councilman DiGiulio.
Here.
Councilman Cavo is here.
Present.
Councilman Rotello is here. Councilman Visconti.
Present.
Councilman Palma.
Present.
Councilman Knapp.
Here.
Councilman John Esposito.
Here.
Councilman Santos.
Here.
Councilman Perkins.
Present.
Councilman Shinisi.
Present.
Councilman Camisa.
Here.
Councilman. And Councilman Malero.
Here.
There being 21 present and zero absent. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for acceptance of the electronic service.
So moved.
Okay, made by Councilman Perkins, seconded by Councilman Emile Bizet. All of those acknowledging that they've received electronic service. Please hear they did. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, good. All right, we have several pieces of correspondence. So I'm going to view off and yeah, Ms. O'Brien will read the correspondence into the record.
Okay. All right, we have six pieces of input that were emailed to us. We will start with number one. This is from Andrea Gartner, 112 Deer Hill Avenue, on item number 15. Dear Mayor Mark Bowden and members of the City Council, I would like to speak to item City Council Agenda regarding the vote to pass the bond referendum. The bond referendum was originally scheduled to go to a public vote on April 28th and rescheduled in a second. While I agree in principle that given these extraordinary times, there should be no public assembly that would put people at risk of exposure and possible infection of the COVID-19 virus. I'm not in favor of the City Council voting on this tonight. Although it makes sense for the Council to vote on the bond, it is the right thing to do under circumstances. Is it fair to voters and citizens to make this decision tonight? As council members, you likely know how you're going to vote, but do you know how your constituents feel? The public was going to weigh in on June 2nd to let you know what they think, and no, they cannot. Instead, they have less than 35 hours to respond to the change. Clearly, this is not a scenario where the public has enough time to weigh in. Mr. Mayor, you are citing the Governor's Executive Order as the reason to move forward in this way. The intention of the Governor's Executive Order is to facilitate budget approvals in the 160-plus municipalities that take that process referendum. To allow for public input during the pandemic, the public has 30 days to weigh in. If the city is using this executive order as a basis for the bond, then let's maintain integrity in the process by allowing public input before a vote. A vote on June 2nd was the public's way of weighing in on the matter, and that has changed. To allow a time period to listen to your constituents before you vote is the right thing to do, even when you predict the outcome will be the same. A massive spending plan, the largest general bond in the history of Danbury, is happening on your watch, and it's important to get it right. Yes, these are unprecedented times, but I caution against setting any precedent that undermines your duty and your obligation to represent what residents of Danbury want. We know that people want transparency in local government. Transparency was a big campaign issue. As members of the City Council, please do not question a lack of transparency in government. To vote on the bond on tonight is supporting a lack of transparency in the mayor's office. The mayor is live at 5:00 throughout the week, and he did not make his intention to put the bond to a City Council vote known more questions that were posted. This is not about being political. It's about honest civic engagement and local governance. The reason why I'm taking the time to submit a comment for the tonight's meeting, especially during times of unrest, and more so because you are likely conservative or representatives, you need to look outside yourselves and not default to what is easiest but aspire to what is best in the public's interest. Please defer your vote, vote on the bond until the next City Council meeting on June 2nd, which was the scheduled referendum date. In the meantime, you can publicly and broadly reach out to your constituents and invite them to comment. In doing so, your actions will reflect the spirit of the Governor's Executive Order that you are using to cancel the referendum. Otherwise, it feels like an opportunistic play in the work of times to move the largest general bond and Danbury straight forward, but as little oversight and public input as possible. Also admitting people in as we go, I am hearing a lot of feedback. If you guys can mute yourself again. So these messages are read clearly. That would appreciate it. All right, number two, this is from Tom Brown, Lynn Valerie Lean, on item 13, the ordinance appropriating $3 million for public improvements in the 2020-2021 capital budget and authorizing the issuance of $3 million bonds to the city to meet the appropriation. His comments are, can we taxpayers view the list of capital projects Danbury has planned to accomplish using the $3 million of borrowed money? Can those projects be publicly identified and discussed during the council's consideration agenda, item number 13? Okay, third one is from Kristen Kovacs-Harty, 12 Ornum Road in Danbury. Dear Mayor Mark Bowden and members of the City Council, I would like to speak to item 15 of this month's City Council Agenda regarding the council vote to pass the bond referendum. The bond referendum was originally scheduled to go to a public vote on April 28th and then rescheduled to June 2nd. As you know, this represents the largest general obligation bond in the history of the city of Danbury. The Charter of the City of Danbury states that voters and taxpayers must approve any bond proposal in excess of $3 million. Cannot be decided by the City Council alone. However, it is understood that recent state executive orders have temporarily changed the manner in which municipalities conduct business, including matters of budgetary and financial concern during this health crisis. Given current restricted public participation and tremendous economic uncertainty, it would be prudent to defer the decision on this proposal until either the August presidential primary or the November general election, when voters and taxpayers will have the opportunity to exercise their constitutional rights to be heard. Yesterday's announcement from the Secretary of State offering absentee ballot applications to every registered voter gives us even more of a reason to wait. This change will allow people to vote safely from their home. People are fighting to stay alive physically and economically. On April 30th, the mayor tweeted that 4,000 unemployment claims had been submitted in the first three weeks of April, and he predicted that, "We are about", in quotes, "we are about to face unprecedented economic times." What exactly does that mean? How much will our taxes increase just to cover the annual operating budget? What will this bond cost us? Four days ago, Governor Lamont announced that analysts project state revenues will decline a staggering $7 billion between now and mid-2023. Clearly, that will lead to increased and massive spending cuts. The bottom line is, we just can't afford to borrow $62 million right now. Frankly, I don't believe we ever could, but at least allow the taxpayers to vote directly on this in a few months to vote now with little or no public input as both fiscally and ethically irresponsible. Thank you for your attention. This is from Juan Rivas, 59 Dean Road. This is on items 14 and 15. That's the senior tax freeze in the system. Good evening, Mayor Mark Bowden and City Council members. I write to you tonight to express my public view on the two stated items listed above. As the son of two older parents, who this year have completed the senior tax freeze provided by the city of Danbury, I ask that the City Council vote yes on this proposed ordinance as it's beneficial to people that rely on fixed income. To assure that they get some relief from the growing expenses in today's economic climate, which has been greatly affected with the ongoing pandemic. Second, I would like to express favor in approving item number 15. As a citizen of Danbury and parent of two children in the public school system, I would like to see the SNAP 2020 approved and passed. Last election cycle, a number of concerns in regard to roads and schools. In January, this ordinance was proposed, presented, and explained in detail to the public. I have watched every City Council meeting in regards to this matter. Being that this was going to be left to go on April 28th to make the final decision, that now is not a possibility due to current circumstances and is left to the elected body to make that decision for us. I hope you kept your promise to keep our interests at heart and make the right choice. As I feel like this is the right step in addressing the concerns involving our cities' roads and schools. We depend on the roads. Our schools need to continue to receive the help and support. I hope to see this pass so we can get back to work and making this city a great city that it is in times like these we shall overcome. This can be the start to it. I have three more. This is from Carolyn and Lucian Gordanno for the 23 Maple Crest Drive for the SNAP 2020. That's item 15. To Danbury City Council, I'm writing to object to the decision to revoke the referendum vote on the SNAP 2020 bond issue. The town bylaws require a popular vote on bond issues. My reading of Governor Lamont's executive order is that while it covers annual budgets, it does not extend to one bond issues. There are other ways to allow citizens to vote on this measure, including online. The town council has no legal right to take away this vote. Even if by some loophole the council thinks they do, it sends a message to the citizens of Danbury that their views on this important issue don't matter. They are due to reconsider this rash decision and implement a safe, popular referendum vote on the SNAP 2020 bond. This is from Robert Malillo, 1 Lower Street, Danbury, on item number 15. Dear Mayor Mark Bowden and members of the City Council, I write to you in strong support of item 15 on tonight's City Council Agenda. I applaud Mayor Bowden for advocating on behalf of our schoolchildren and moving this item forward in order to ensure Danbury students and staff have the necessary facilities so they can receive the quality of education we have all become accustomed to here in Danbury. As a schoolteacher as well as a parent in Danbury, I can see firsthand the need for improvements. I am a proud Bajust graduate and want my children to have the same opportunities that I had. The contents of this SNAP 2020 bond package have been subject to public disclosure and comment for several months now. These are unprecedented times, and it's time to move these much-needed upgrades forward, while also at the same time not asking anyone to risk their health by having to go out and vote at the polls in a referendum. Thank you to advance your support of this bond and holding true to your commitment to the residents of Danbury. And finally, this is from Edwin Duran. It says, my name is Edwin Duran. I live at 11 Highview Circle, Danbury, Connecticut. I'm writing in support of passing the SNAP 2020 bond. I have two children in the Danbury Public School System. I understand that public vote would now have to wait until mid-August if it were to proceed for the pandemic. I think that waiting on this bond would be irresponsible for my kids and all of Danbury students who build the new infrastructure. The right thing to do would be for the council to vote yes and support our children. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Taylor. Appreciate the comments from the public. Just a couple of announcements that I kind of want to go through this evening. First of all, one of our councilmen lost his father during the last month. So Farley, on behalf of the city of Danbury and all of the councilpeople, I want to extend our sincerest condolences to you and your family, your father, by all accounts, and all your writings, and how lovingly you speak of him, was a wonderful man. And I know that you miss him, and I just want you to know that we're praying for you and your family. So with that, if we could have a moment of silence for Odino, we would... Thank you. Next announcement I have is Colleen and Bill Stanley are grandparents.
Yeah.
Congratulations. Josh and Eliza, yep, have a beautiful baby girl, Olivia. Congratulations, Councilwoman. Awesome job. And I think that's all I have for birthdays and events like that this month. With that, I'm now, who is it? John Priola, I'm sorry. Happy birthday, Councilman Priola. Sorry, I missed you, buddy. There you are. You're up around that corner. Circle gets a square. Okay, you got to see what I'm looking at here. So anyways, I want to now, I have Cara Prunti, who is our acting director of health. Just give us a little bit of an update regarding the COVID-19 activities within the city, what her department's been doing, what are some of the challenges they faced. Give us some numbers in terms of what we're facing here locally. So Cara, I know you're on. I think I saw you. Okay, here's Cara for you. So Cara, you have the floor.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. Thanks, Mayor. I thought I would start off with providing a summary of the numbers relative to COVID-19 in the city and the state. Some good news, the numbers of positive cases we're seeing each day is decreasing. We have 1,627 confirmed cases, and unfortunately, 93 deaths related to COVID-19 in Danbury. There are 30,621 confirmed cases and 2,633 COVID-related deaths in the state of Connecticut. We have 12 city employees that are currently out either in isolation or quarantine. And in our emergency shelter, we currently have 58 individuals residing at the Super 8 Hotel. We opened March 27th, and we were the first city in the state to move shelter operations into a hotel as part of the state's plan. We conduct daily health screenings to ensure the safety of the shelter staff and shelter residents. We get updates from the state, the hospital, nursing homes, and long-term care facilities daily. We are closely monitoring the evolving situation. Danbury and Fairfield County is still one of the hotspots in the country. We have been one of the hardest-hit areas in the state. As I mentioned earlier, we are leveling off in terms of new cases, but it is anticipated that we will see spikes as we slowly reopen various sectors of the economy. To ensure the safety of our community, the Health Department is conducting contact tracing as part of the state's plan to safely and strategically reopen. Contact tracing is a system where we communicate with known COVID patients and ask them to recall to the best of their ability everyone that they have had close contact with. We then notify those individuals that they have been exposed and recommend them to stay home for 14 days and monitor their symptoms. We have a new system, Sarah Alert, that helps with this. This program sends a text, email, or phone call to record your symptoms. If a person becomes symptomatic, it is recommended to them that they can contact their doctor and get tested, and we can assist them with that process. Contact tracing is important because there is a lot of people who are asymptomatic but potentially spreading the virus. This is a constantly changing situation, and the recommendations are changing daily. Our Health Department continues to monitor these changes and has been working diligently with state health officials, local healthcare facilities, and our community partners to protect the health of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Cara. Now, a little bit unusual, but with the diligence with the councils, okay, do any council members have any questions for Cara during this period? Or you can always wait till department reports if you think of something. But I didn't know if anybody wanted to ask her anything related to COVID-19, but we had her up here.
Your Honor, I would, if you don't mind.
No, sure. Mr. John Esposito.
Thank you, Your Honor. Director, how is it you get the information for the cases? Is that provided by healthcare providers or people reporting them to you?
So this, we get it from a combination of places. We get a daily report from the hospital. We also get it from urgent care facilities. We have a relationship with some of them in New York State, and then we also get reports from the state.
And you mentioned a way of tracking, tracing the, you know, the origin from when somebody got sick. I'm sorry, what did you call that?
Contact tracing.
And you said that's up and running, and you're doing that?
Yes, we've been doing that since the beginning. We did that with just our first responders. We've now expanded that to the general public for all new positive cases that we get.
Okay, thanks, Cara. I'm sure this is a tough situation for you to take a new job on, and I wish you good luck, and thank you and your staff for all you guys are doing.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other questions for Cara? Anybody else looking for the floor with Cara? Okay, Colleen. Colleen Stanley. I think you muted. Hold on, Colleen.
Yeah, Colleen, you have to unmute yourself.
Unmute yourself. There you go. Okay.
When you say, this is through you to Cara. How do you, how do you do the contact tracing? How does, how is that implemented?
So we get a list of new positive cases each day, and we have a series that we have some public health nurses that are assisting us along with our staff, and we contact those individuals who have tested positive, and we ask them who they've been in contact with. We then record that in that system that I was talking about, Sarah Alert, and that sends out daily messaging to those individuals to record their symptoms. So then we have a record of potential people who have been exposed and then also who have already tested positive.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other councilpeople wish to ask Cara any questions or any concerns that you might have? No? Okay, anybody looking for the floor? Okay, we'll move on with our agenda then. At this time, Mr. Majority Leader, we have the consent count.
Yes, Your Honor. The consent calendar, May 5th, 2020. Item number three, receive the communication and approve the transfer in the amount of $240,191.27 on the dispense list as presented by the tax collector. Item number four, receive the communication and adopt the resolution authorizing the City of Danbury Board of Education through the superintendent of schools to file a grant application with related documents with and to the State of Connecticut Department of Administrative Services and to accept a grant for state reimbursement funding for the Ellsworth Avenue Annex Project and to establish a school building committee for the above-named project consisting of city members Thomas H. Hughes III, Daniel Garrett, Sean Hanley, Charles J. Volpe Jr., and Antonio Idarola, Professional Engineer Chairman, School Department Staff, Richard Jalbert, and Courtney DeMorris, Board of Education Members Rachel Chalinski and Kathleen Malinero, and City Council Member Fred Visconti. Item five, receive the communication and adopt the resolution authorizing Mayor Mark D. Bowden or Michael Sefrenic Airport Administrator as is designated to apply to the Federal Aviation Administration to obtain grant funding for reimbursement in the amount of $182,000 for the airport layout plan update with narrative project, of which 90% is to be funded by the Federal Aviation Administration, 7.5% to be funded by the state of Connecticut, and 2.5% to be funded by the city, and if the grant is approved, to execute any necessary documents and to take any additional actions necessary to effectuate the purposes thereof. Item six, receive the communication and adopt the resolution authorizing Mayor Mark D. Bowden or Michael Sefrenic Airport Administrator as is designated to apply to the Federal Aviation Administration to obtain grant funding in the amount of $69,000 as part of the CARES Act. If the grant is approved, to execute any necessary documents and to take any additional actions necessary to effectuate the purposes thereof, there is no local match required. Item number seven, lastly, receive the communication and adopt the resolution authorizing Mayor Mark D. Bowden for Patrick Ridenhour, Chief of Police as is designated, to apply for and accept funding from the United States Department of Justice through its coronavirus emergency supplemental funding program. This funding not to exceed $70,000 will be used for new purchases or purchases since January 1, 2020 that are not funded through the operational budget and are related to the coronavirus pandemic. And if the grant is approved, the mayor is authorized to sign any contracts or documents in connection therewith to effectuate the purposes of said grant with no local match being required. That, Your Honors, the consent calendar.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Majority Leader. What's your pleasure, councilors, relates to the consent calendar? Or Councilman Fox?
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I move adoption of the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
motion made a second. Who was the second there? Dwayne? Councilman Perkins? Okay. By show of your emoticons, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposition? Okay, consent calendar is adopted. Mr. President, can we do item one, please? I'm waiting a minute. I'm sorry, minutes. Yep, Mr. President, go over the minutes, please.
Your Honor, at this time, I move that we accept the minutes of the April 7, 2020 virtual meeting, as all members have copies. The copies are available online on the city website and in the Office of Legislative Assistant. Second.
motion made second by Councilman Perkins. Are any corrections or deletions to the minutes as presented? Seeing none, then, I will try your minds. All favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, any? Okay, thank you. Minutes passed. We've done the consent calendar. Okay, I got your emoticons. Thanks, guys. Let's move to item one, please, Mr. President. Wait, where's your hand up?
Councilman Towertock, you have your hand up.
Councilman Towertock, you have your hand up. Did you want to speak?
No, no.
Okay. It's okay. Good job, Bob. Go ahead, Joe. Joe, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Mayor Mark D. Bowden, members of the City Council regarding donation, Danbury Adult Softball Leagues. Dear Mayor Bowden and Councilmembers, Danbury Adult Softball League would like to donate a new scoreboard for Field Number Two located in Rogers Park. The current scoreboard is no longer functional and replacement parts are no longer available. This will be a vast improvement from the old board and will be enjoyed by all of the leagues using the complex. The Parks Department will assist the league with installation. The value of the new scoreboard is thirty-eight thousand dollars. I'm sorry, three thousand eight hundred dollars. I request that this donation be accepted at the next meeting of the City Council. If you require any additional information, please do not hesitate. Please do not hesitate to contact me sincerely, Nicholas Kaplanis, Director of Recreation.
Second.
Okay, we just need a motion first. Councilwoman Stanley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I received the communication, recommend acceptance of the donation of the new scoreboard value, that thirty-eight hundred dollars, from the Danbury Adult Softball League and send a letter of thanks.
So this has been made and seconded by, was it Mr. Salvatore? Second, okay. Any discussion about this donation?
I do, Your Honor.
Who, Mr. Shinisi, go ahead.
Thank you. To Nick and Planetus, can you give us a description of the actual scoreboard? Because thirty-eight hundred dollars doesn't, is it an electronic scoreboard? Or is it a manual scoreboard?
Yes, it's electronic. It's wireless. Can you hear me? I mean, I haven't seen it. I haven't seen it. I mean, it's going to take the place of the one that was there, so it'll have runs innings. You know, just general, you know, score information that you would keep for a softball game.
Okay. Further questions?
Yep, that's it.
Thanks, Ben. Any other questions for Nick? Okay, seeing none, I'll try your minds on accepting the donation. All in favor, show me your emoticon.
Aye.
Okay, aye. Any opposed? Okay, aye, savit. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. President, item two, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Honorable Mayor Mark D. Bowden, City Council Regarding Donation of Engineering Design Services and Construction Services, Old Sherman Turnpike Emergency Cross-Culvert Repairs. Dear Mayor Bowden and City Councilmembers, the Public Works Department recently discovered the failure of an end for the above-noted cross culvert will require immediate repairs. This end wall was repaired once before several years ago when a portion of the road failed and it exposed a high-volume and high-pressure gas main. Since a majority of the traffic on this road is mostly heavy commercial and the road is very narrow, immediate action has to be taken. The other critical issue is the fact that the old road is dead, is a dead end, and if it fails, there is no way for people to get out of that area or any emergency services into that end of the road. As I was working with adjacent property owners to discuss the significant disruption that may occur during construction repairs, an adjacent owner has offered to pay for the design and repairs. I am requesting that the city accept this incredible gift and show of kindness from FSI AB LLC in association with Rizzo Companies. Accept engineering services valued at approximately a hundred thousand dollars. Accept construction services valued at approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We will be working diligently on this issue every day, and I have engineered a temporary repair to help stabilize the road. We will be monitoring this road on a daily basis. Thank you for your consideration, Antonio Aderola, Public Works Director, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. What's your pleasure, council? Councilman Mike Esposito.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion that we receive the correspondence and accept the generous gift and donation from the Engineering Design Services and Construction Services in coordination with the Rizzo Companies.
Which is made and seconded by Councilwoman Stanley. Is there a discussion related to this donation? Mr. Rotella.
Thanks, Your Honor. Through the chair to Antonio. Director Aderola, who is going to manage the project and who is going to be in charge of ancillary things like traffic control and whatnot? And by the way, this is an amazing donation. And I mean, hats off to the, those in the Rizzo Companies. But I mean, are we basically going to be the facility on top of all this? Thanks.
Mr. Councilmember, yes, we are going to administrate this project. Literally, if it was one of our own city projects, we'll be utilizing their contractor and their engineer. Both of those individuals are people that we've worked with before, and we have a relationship with each. And we're looking to try to expedite this as quickly as possible due to the nature of the repair.
Understood. Thank you, Director. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome, Mr. Rotella. Further discussion related to this donation? Mr. Shinisi.
Thank you, Your Honor. Antonio, can you give us a brief description on the actual repairs? I mean, I'm not familiar with the cross culvert.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, is it okay for me to respond?
Absolutely.
Okay, so the downstream side of the culvert has a huge gap underneath the retaining wall, which goes back about three feet, probably bigger than that. In order to make that repair, we're going to have to widen the road so we can allow alternating one-way traffic to occur. We'll remove the old wall, construct a brand-new wall with a portion of the, an extension to allow for this work to happen. And then we'll eventually complete the road job by installing a brand-new road, and we'll be utilizing the additional width that we have created during the construction process. So it's a pretty clear-cut project and been working on it for about maybe two weeks now, three weeks since we discovered it.
Just a follow-up. So the donation will cover all the repairs on the road, or would there be some city resources needed?
So, Mr. Shinisi, our anticipation is that it's going to cover the entire cost of the design and construction. We have had some discussions with them, just in case the project does come in over a little bit of above three fifty. They're willing to work with us on that issue, too. So it is a most gracious offer.
It sounds it. Good, really good offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion related to this donation? Anybody else have any questions related to this donation? Seeing none, then I will try your minds. All in favor of accepting the donation? Signify with your thumbs up emoticon.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Put the thumbs down. Okay. There isn't? All right, it's kind of cool. Okay. Items three, four, and five are on consent. Item six, please, Mr. President.
Your Honor, I think item six was also on consent. Six and seven are both on consent.
Consent, yes.
Item eight, please.
Actually, I. Just give me one second. Just give me one second to get there. Sorry about that. I thought I was ready, but I'm off by one item. Item eight, to honorable Mayor Mark D. Bowden via the City Council from David St. Hilaire, Director of Finance, Regarding the Downtown Special Services District. Attached to will find a resolution establishing the annual tax levy for the Downtown Special Services District in accordance with the provisions of Section nineteen B dash seven of the Danbury Code of Ordinances. This proposed levy upon taxable interest in real property located within the district is derived from the annual district budget adoption pursuant to state and local law. In accordance with Section seven dash three-three-nine R of the Connecticut General Statute, it's the obligation of the City Council to impose the recommended levy as a municipal levy for the benefit of the district. Please consider the adoption of this resolution in the usual fashion. Please feel free to contact me should you require any additional information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. What's your pleasure, council?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilman Priola, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to move that we receive the communication and adopt the resolution approving the tax rate for the downtown tax district.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Shinisi, I think. Is that close enough? Oh, Mr. Santos, sorry. Any discussion related to the downtown special services tax? Any questions or discussions? Mr. St. Hilaire is here if you have a question. Okay, seeing none, then show me your thumbs. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Aye, savit. Motion carries unanimously. Item nine. Item nine, Mr. President.
Item nine. Public input was held for the following resolution and applicant list Neighborhood Assistance Act via email. The period to comment was open from Wednesday, April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, to Sunday, May third, twenty twenty. All comments will be gathered and distributed to the City Council via email prior to the City Council meeting in May. The items and public input instructions are available on the City Danbury City Council webpage and the News Times, both in print and online. This is the resolution, this is the motion, or this is the correspondence to accept the Neighborhood Assistance Act.
Thank you, Mr. President. What's your pleasure, council? Mr. Fox.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I move to receive the communication and adopt the resolution to authorize participation in the Neighborhood Assistance Program for such organizations as have duly applied and have been approved for said program.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Shinisi. Discussion related to the Neighborhood Assistance Act. Questions, discussion? Seeing none, show me your emoticons. All in favor, signify by saying thumbs up.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, savit. Motion carries unanimously. Item ten, please.
To honorable Mayor Mark D. Bowden via the City Council from David St. Hilaire, Director of Finance, ordinance water rates. The overall consumption of water for billing purposes has been relatively stable over the last several years, although the average consumption per user has trended downward. The historical consumption level was the basis for the recommendation for the current year rate reduction of one and a half percent. However, this year, the water fund is experiencing a notable decline in build consumption levels and revenues. Consequently, I'm recommending a modest increase of three percent in water rates to supplement associated consumption revenue declines and to support the water fund operating budget for fiscal year twenty-one. Attached to will find an ordinance which will require a public hearing and City Council approval. Should you need any additional information, please feel free to give me a call.
Thank you, Mr. President. What's your pleasure, council? Councilman, now?
You got it. Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to receive the communication and refer it to an ad hoc and public comment.
Ad hoc show consists of the following. Councilman Cavo will be in the chair. Councilman DiGiulio and Councilman Rotella. Item eleven, please.
Okay. Just give me a second. I'm scrolling through all of item ten. Item eleven, here we go. To honorable Mayor Mark D. Bowden via the City Council from David St. Hilaire, Director of Finance, Regarding ordinance sewer rates. As you are aware, Danbury Motors approved bond authorizations of a hundred and twelve point six million dollars for the wastewater treatment plant improvement project as mandated by Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, C T D E E P. Consequently, I am recommending a modest increase of three percent in sewer rates to accommodate the higher debt service payments and annual operating costs and to support the sewer fund operating budget for fiscal year twenty-one. Attached to will find an ordinance which will require a public hearing and City Council approval. Should you need any additional information, feel free to give me a call.
Thank you, Mr. President. What's your pleasure, council? Councilman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Councilman DiGiulio, there you are.
Thank you. I move to receive this communication and refer this item to an ad hoc and for public comment.
Motion made to refer to an ad hoc. Ad hoc show consists of the following. Normally, I wouldn't do this, but just to keep, you know, because of the complexities of scheduling these meetings, I'm going to keep the same ad hoc committee as the water rate. So that would be Councilman Cavo, Councilman DiGiulio, and Councilman Rotella. Just they can have them back-to-back. Yeah, well, they have to notice each one, but it'll be back-to-back. Okay, item thirteen, item twelve, please.
Item twelve is an ad hoc report, Government Entities and Review Board. At this time, Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we waive the reading of the minutes as all members have copies. The copies are on file for review in the office of the Legislative Assistant.
Motion has been made to waive the meeting of the, waive the reading of the, meaning, waive the reading of the minutes. Is there a second? Who was that? That was, yeah, Mr. DiGiulio with a second. Any discussion about reading the minutes? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. I'm just waving, reading the minutes. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. So now we'll go to the main motion, Mr. Cavo. That would be, Mr. Zevi, you have the floor.
Your Honor, I move that this be sent to, for public comment.
Report and ordinance would be sent to a public comment. Any objection? Seeing no objection, it is so ordered. We'll have it posted. Now we'll move on to Mr. President. Item thirteen, please.
Your Honor. Item number thirteen. Public input was held for the following ordinance, three million dollar bond via email. The period to comment was open from Wednesday, April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, to Sunday, May third, twenty twenty. All comments will be gathered and distributed to the City Council via email prior to the City Council meeting in May. The items and public input instructions were available on the City of Danbury Council webpage and the News Times, both in print and online. And this is the adoption of the ordinance appropriating three million dollars for public improvement projects in the twenty-twenty-one capital budgets and authorizing the issuance of three million dollars in bonds of the city to meet set appropriations and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose.
What's your pleasure, council?
That would be me, Your Honor.
Councilwoman, there you are. Okay.
Thank you, Your Honor. I received the communication and move to recommend the adoption of the ordinance appropriating three million dollars for public improvement projects. City sidewalk repair replacement, two hundred and fifty thousand. Bridge replacement program, one million two hundred and fifty thousand. Paving drainage and road improvements, one million five hundred thousand dollars. The total of three million dollars in the two thousand twenty-twenty-one capital budget. And authorize the issuance of three million dollar of bonds of the city to meet set appropriations and to make temporary borrowings for such purpose.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by.
Second, second.
Mr. Rotella make the second. Okay, you're all very close. Okay, discussions under this item. We're item thirteen, discuss, please. Mr. Rotella.
Yeah, I mean, Your Honor, we heard a comment from somebody who wanted this fleshed out a little bit. Maybe you could, maybe you could take that at this time.
Sure, I'll also call on Mr. Aderola, too. Generally, as you, as a, this is the capital portion, part of the capital portion of our budget. You know, we typically borrow three million dollars in notes each year for nuts and bolts, infrastructure work within the city. By far, probably the largest expenditure there is the bridge replacement program. This is a revolving program that allows us to build a bridge or rebuild a bridge. The state reimburses us a portion. We take the reimbursement, put it back in the fund, and then go do another bridge. The reimbursement is not a hundred percent, so slowly we wear down the replacement fund. And that's what's happened here. The last time we replenished this was probably four or five years ago. And each year, we've got to do about three or four bridges throughout this. So also paving and drainage, somewhat self-explanatory, but we do need to continue those projects. And with that, I'm going to throw it over to Mr. Aderola that can maybe flesh that out a little bit more. And with that, I'm going to throw it over to Mr. Idrola that can maybe flesh that out a little bit more. Antonio?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. You actually did, uh, did a very good job explaining how we use this money to leverage ourselves to get our bridges on a couple of the local bridge programs. One is a state bridge program. One is a federal bridge program that's administered by the state. And we do all the preliminary engineering work and survey so we can position ourselves in the best way we can to get those grants. And we've been incredibly successful, but we're basically down to no money left in that account. So that's, that's a portion of it. Then we do an extensive sidewalk repair and replacement program every year. We utilize about 200 to 250,000 dollars. That covers a number of sidewalk projects in the city. In all kinds, every location you could imagine, depending on, uh, on the severity of the repair. We focus most of our efforts around schools, our downtown schools, obviously. Because we have so many children that walk to school, we want to have the safest possible sidewalks. The rest of it is really just a, um, an enhancement of whatever monies you guys have been so gracious to give us and utilizing it for drainage and paving. So it's an extra, whatever you give us above the 1.5 million dollars is a shot in the arm. Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Director. Thanks, Your Honor.
Thank you. Further questions or comments, Mr. Shanisi?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, this is, since this is dealing with the capital budget, and I mentioned this before, just this afternoon with Les, regarding the actual budget. Now, um, my question is really, is it either to Les or maybe to Corporation Council? So regarding the actual budget, which this is actually relating to in some degree. Now, the executive order that was issued, seven C, which requires the budget to be to be approved by May 15th, or a 30-day extension could be given by the legislative body, which is the city council. I know that, um, executive order seven I takes the approval process away from the legislative body and to the budget-making authority, which is the mayor. But it does not mention anything regarding the actual May 15 deadline. So my question is to the, to the, to the mayor or to Corporation Council, will we have a budget by May 15?
So I'll flip this over to, was that yours? So Okay, so, uh, we can have Les opine on this a little bit more, but seven I eclipses, extinguishes the 30-day extension of the previous executive order. And so doing so, the May 15th requirement is not, uh, really, uh, required. Part of that reason is, is because the governor has not released his mid-year budget adjustments yet, which I think every city and town is waiting for. David and I are done with the budget, but I don't want to publish it yet until I see what the governor does. Given the fact that, you know, our schools are definitely in a challenging situation. If we, they don't have enough money, but we think we've got the covered, as well as some other grants. What legislature has done in the past is swept all of the city money and then moved it over into the school money, but then we didn't have any money to pay for firefighters, police officers, and parks and things like that. So we really want to see what he's going to do. We, I think I know what he's going to do. He dropped the budget within the next few days, maybe before May 15th. It may be right on May 15th. As soon as he rolls his budget out, I'll, I'll have myself, our lobbyists, everybody comparison and then be able to kind of know if we're going to be on point and be able to make it through the year. Our goal is to present to you a no-mill-rate increase budget. In order to do that, we're going to need every last minute before we, we pull this out. We're there now, but we've got to make sure that we've got it right. I don't want the governor to cut 5 million from us, and I'm saying no-mill-rate increase because we're going to, we're going to have a deficit. I, we did meet, by the way, as just an aside, we did meet with the Board of Ed today and had a very, very productive meeting with them. And we're assisting with them as they file their COVID reimbursements and coronavirus grants. With that, I'm just going to flip it over to Les for a second, Ben.
Thank you.
So Councilman Shanise, you had several points in your question. The executive order seven C that you mentioned did in fact allow legislative bodies to extend the time of adoption of a budget. That didn't have to be invoked. It could be invoked or not be invoked. Later on came executive order seven I, which in view of the governor at least, and the team that processed some of these executive orders on behalf of municipalities to assist everybody in the process of securing appropriate approvals and funding for different borrowing projects. Seven I created a different avenue for legislative bodies to take certain actions, and we'll probably deal with that a little bit later on tonight. But for purposes of your question, this particular capital improvement bond in general proceeds in the normal fashion, meaning that it has all of the attributes of a normal bond adoption by the city council, including the publication. The only relevance to the annual city budget is that it shows up at the same time on an annual basis. But your actions tonight, including the actions of the public input session, are all appropriate in order to allow you to vote on that either up or down as you, as you normally do. So with respect to those executive orders, there's really only marginal impact on this particular item.
Just a follow-up, Your Honor?
Sure, absolutely.
Again, my question is whether or not the executive order seven C applies regarding for the original budget, whether or not he needs the extra 30 days. Because when you look at seven I, item number 12, it even mentions additional municipal bodies that are subject to the extension of the budget adoption. So you would think that item executive order seven C still applies, even though seven I supersedes as far as the approval process. But the extension still should apply to them to at least May 15th or 30 days after that.
For, for, for purpose, for purposes of the budget, as, as you may have known, because the mayor made some remarks last month, for purposes of the annual city budget, the process is different this year than it has before for a number of reasons. Basically, those set out in an earlier, another executive order, I, the one you mentioned. Executive order seven C, though, uh, could have been invoked. That was an earlier executive order. At that time, the governor was anticipating a, if you will, a flatter curve. What happened was that was at the front end of the coronavirus pandemic. And when that was issued, he provided an option to municipalities through their legislative bodies to add an additional 30 days onto the time limit for their budget adoption. In our case, May 15th, that would have been June 15th. That was not invoked. So it's not really a relevant section of an executive order at this point in time. It, it was there, could have been used. Some people may have used it. We did not decide to use that. And as far as the city budget, uh, the plan is to proceed with the provisions of executive order seven I, which you had referenced.
Okay. Well, it's, it's still a little confusing with all these executive orders, one trumping another, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Your opinion on, on that matter, so.
Let, let me just, let me just quickly jump back into that confusion and, and I can't blame anybody, even lawyers, for being somewhat, not, not so much confused, but in the last six weeks or seven weeks, every time you turn around, you can't finish your meal, and another executive order came forward. And that's understandable because the governor and his office were trying to deal with a number of fast-moving issues and, and tweaking them as they went under the circumstances of the way this virus was developing. So what the governor tried to do, and what we saw him trying to do, was to adopt executive orders that either fulfilled previous executive orders, adjusted them, modified them for the needs that were present at the time that came forward. So, in fact, one of the executive orders, just the last one, I think, executive order HH, in fact clarified in the earlier executive order. That happened quite frequently. So, so these are, these are kind of fast or slow-moving objects, but they each provide an avenue to try to assist municipalities when it comes to their finances, to try to process these finances as quickly as possible so that none of the residents and constituents are left without appropriate funding for whatever projects the municipality wants.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Shanisi. Further, uh, who's got the floor? Any other discussion?
Councilman DeJulio?
Councilman DeJulio, is your hand up?
Uh, no, it's not. That's from previous item. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, so at this time then, uh, I'll try your minds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Okay, ayes have it, motion carries. Item 14, please.
Your Honor.
Uh, Mr. Vazette?
Okay. I'm going to read the correspondence.
Read the correspondence.
To Honorable Mayor Mark D. Bowden via the city council from David St. Hilaire, Director of Finance, tax-free program for elderly homeowners. The purpose of the ordinance is to assist qualified elderly homeowners aged 65 and older on fixed incomes with a property tax credit to make it more affordable to stay in their homes. While the city does offer other similar programs for our seniors, this program specifically designed to mitigate any adverse effects resulting from the October 2/1st, 2017 state-mandated grand list reevaluation. This program will sunset with each subsequent reevaluation unless specifically renewed by the adoption of an amended ordinance. I respectfully ask for the referral of this proposed ordinance to a subcommittee of the city council for review and to take action in order to what we may provide the benefits for the ensuing fiscal year. Please feel free to contact me should you require any additional information. Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes, Mr. Vazette?
Yeah, I make a motion to receive the communication and refer to an ad hoc and public comment.
Okay, ad hoc committee show consists of the following. Councilman Kavo in the chair, Councilman Fox, and Councilman Shanisi. Okay, item 15, please.
Uh, just give me a second. I'm scrolling through. Item number 15. Honorable members of the city council, city of Danbury, Connecticut, dear members of the city council, as you are aware, the city of Danbury has been planning on a referendum, SNAP 2020, to fund much-needed infrastructure and education improvement projects throughout the city. At the February meeting of the city council, the council decided to send the bond proposal to the voters for a vote at the April 28th presidential preference primary. Unfortunately, the primary was postponed to June by Governor Lamont and again on April 17th to August 11th in response to the COVID-19 crisis. As part of a series of executive orders, Governor Lamont has authorized cities and towns to forego special town meetings, in our case, the referendum, to avoid large groups of people and employees from interacting in close proximity so as not to infect more people with the virus. The governor has authorized the legislative body to serve as a special town meeting referendum and vote on the bond package. Corporation Council attorney Yemen, attorney Pinter, as well as our outside town council attorney Glenn Santoro have all reviewed this process and agree this is reflective of the governor's executive order. The vote of the city council will serve as the final vote on adoption or rejection of the SNAP 2020. Please feel free to contact attorney Pinter if you have any questions. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Mark D. Bowden, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Kavo?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a rather lengthy motion, so please just bear with me. I move to receive the communication and ordinances and resolution following and in accordance with procedures and authorities set forth an executive order of the governor numbered E07-S-7 to adopt the two ordinances entitled. An ordinance appropriating $38,700,000 for various capital improvements to neighborhoods, paving, and parks within the city, and authorizing the issuance of $38,700,000 bonds of the city to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. And an ordinance appropriating $23,300,000 for various capital improvements to schools within the city, and authorizing the issuance of $23,300,000 bonds of the city to meet said appropriations and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. Together with a finding that section nine of said ordinances is specifically applicable and is reasonable and necessary for the protection of persons with, and property within the city as therein set forth, together with compliance with publication, posting, public hearing, and notice requirements as having occurred in February 2020, together with a resolution canceling, canceling and waiving the original established authorizations to establish a bond referendum and date of April 28th, 2020, as set by the city council on February 4th, 2020, and to open this bond up for public comment for 10 days.
Second. Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Kavo, seconded by Councilman Priola. We're going to open it up now for comments and discussion. I will just gently remind the council that the discussion should be focused around the question at hand today. This is a situation where you'll be acting in the stead of the voter. So questions that hearken back or reach back to the public hearings that we've had or the multiple events that we've had, public information sessions, those are all passed. The, the actual issuance made it through the council 18/1 on the last go-around. So this is a simple majority that's required. And your comments again must be focused on the question tonight, not on rehashing the different components of the bond. That's already been done and outlined by the council. And so with that, I'll throw it open to questions, to discussions. I'll certainly give you some latitude. Mr. Rotella?
Thank you, Your Honor. We're really dealing with seven S now, which is piggybacking or an addendum or an annex to seven I and seven B. One of the things that comes up in about the middle of seven S-7 is this requirement that we make specific findings that such actions are necessary to permit the orderly operation of the municipality. And I, I think we've crossed that hurdle. But the other one's a little bit more ambiguous in regards of our position here tonight, and that is the need to act immediately and during the duration of a public health and civil preparedness emergency in order to avoid endangering the public health and welfare. So we get that part, but the need to act immediately, to some extent, precludes doing this next week or next month or something like that. Obviously, we can't really wait until August because we pass right by the state imposed deadline, which they have not seen fit to adjust for the, uh, for the coverage of the, the school bond. But if you or perhaps Les can, can speak to the determination about the need to act immediately to satisfy seven S, now's probably a pretty good time to do it. So if somebody wants to jump in, I'd appreciate that. Thank you, Your Honor.
Sure, I'll give it a 50,000-foot level view, and then I'll flip it over to Les if, if that's okay. The immediacy of this is, is as follows. You mentioned the deadline, June 30th. In order for us to put together a comprehensive package for the state of Connecticut to review, we're going to need, and particularly now, our deadlines, our workflow has been extended because people aren't at work, whether you're our workflow has been extended because people aren't at work, whether you're an off-site engineer or whether you're somebody that works here at City Hall, it takes more weeks to be able to pull all this data together that they're gonna want. Both Antonio and I have met twice now, actually three times with the School Facilities Unit. They know this is coming, but you can't, you have to have everything set up in the correct order to be able to meet their hurdle for their reimbursement. So, we need this time to be able to do that. If we waited till June, for example, at the June meeting, we're not gonna have enough time. We're not gonna make, particularly with, with the fact that all of our staff isn't coming into City Hall at this time. So, in terms of the timeliness, that becomes an issue for us. Missing that April twenty eighth day was problematic for us. And time in terms of the immediacy of the project, if we were not to hit the June thirtieth and wait till August or November, we lose an entire year of construction. And what we all have to remember is, whether we like it or not, these children in particular are coming, and they're coming in September, and we're gonna have to find a spot to make sure that they receive an appropriate education. So, every time we lose a week or two weeks, and we've already lost a week, it's a problem for us because we can't expend any money without the authority from the city to do that. So, our experts, our engineers, our demographic people, all that stuff that requires an investment to get to that package to send to the state, you can't do it. So, on the school side, that's important. Obviously, the immediacy of the paving goes without saying. If we don't, you know, do this now, you won't get any paving done this summer, with the exception of the million and a half that we have in the bonds, and that'll do about four roads. So, big roads that we've been talking about for a long time. I'm looking at, I just happen to have Dwayne Perkins right in the middle here, and he's been on me about Long Ridge for two years. So, we've got that programmed in, but I, I won't be able to get to that because I won't get the money probably till September, October. And at that point, you know, you're extinguishing your paving season. So, each one of these pieces has an immediacy to it that is, is exacerbated by COVID nineteen, but that also requires us to move rather quickly because the April twenty eighth day was extinguished. The June second date might have worked for us, but that's been extinguished as well. And so now we're pushed out to August eleventh, and I'm pretty, I can't be hundred percent sure, but I'm gonna guess you may not have that primary on August eleventh anyways, for a variety of reasons. So, from that side of it, the policy side, it's optimal that we move forward now. Mr. Adrola, did you wanna speak to that a little bit?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, you, you hit the key points. We've been in non-stop communications with the state regarding our needs. They have understood this growth that is somewhat unprecedented in the state of Connecticut. They're getting their hands around it, and we all have a lot of work ahead of us to figure out what's the most effective way to deal with it. We know right off the get-go that we have to work with some temporary measures for the children that are coming in September, some additional measures for the children that are coming the following school year, and we're gonna work our way through this. I am currently working with the Board of Education because in getting all of this deadline material in place, we have to work hand-in-hand with the Board of Education in finalizing their educational spec. We have to absolutely ensure that the educational spec meets the academic program and the building can facilitate the academic program. So, I must have shot out a couple emails today, and I reviewed an actual draft of those documents this morning. So, all of this is a moving continuously, moving target to hit that deadline, which is the June thirtieth. So, as you mentioned, June thirtieth is missed. We missed one full construction season based on the way they, they formatted their grant applications. And that, hopefully that, that covers it. Thank you.
I just wanna add to that. I know Mr. St. Hilaire will, can speak to this, but the bond market now is a good time to go out and to execute these notes. There is an immediacy to that as well. As we get deeper into this crisis, we're not sure what's gonna happen with interest rates and how country reacts to it. So, if, with your indulgence, Mr. Rattell, you did ask a question. If you don't wanna hear, that's fine. I just wanted maybe get Mr. St. Hilaire to just opine for a second on the, the bond markets and what, what the marketplace is like out there.
No, no, by all means, please.
Mr. St. Hilaire, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Really, it goes from week to week and what the bond market is looking like. You know, on the referendum that you, or not the referendum, the refunding bonds that you approved last month, we're playing, you know, day by day. We're scheduled for next Tuesday to do the refunding, but honestly, we may have to delay that once again. We're ready to pull the trigger after the last month's meeting, but we had to delay it simply because the, the timing wasn't right. You know, every week it's, you know, we have to kind of watch the market. So, that's, that's why having the authorization gives us the flexibility to gauge the market and, and go out when we need to because, you know, it, it takes a few weeks. Even when we have the authorization, we still have to schedule it and we have to tie, you know, put it out there and let everyone know we're gonna be doing this. So, you know, but we can't wait for another month to get it on the next council agenda and then have an ad hoc and do all these other kind of things and, you know, because then you're talking about two months. And by that time, you might have missed an opportunity that could have reduced the, you know, the interest rates for the taxpayers. And, and that's a long-term cost to the taxpayers if we missed an opportunity. So, these are the kind of things that are really important, especially at this time. Now, does that mean we're gonna go out with, with all of it right away? No, no. Those are discussions that we'll have, you know, with Antonio and on what the, the schedule's gonna look like for construction or what he's gonna need. At first year, he's probably not gonna be doing a lot of construction. Initially, he might for the roads, certainly with the roads, but you know, we'll, we'll work that out and then, you know, we'll do some short-term notes and then convert those into long, you know, bonds. But, you know, this gives us that kind of flexibility that we need to, to really keep the rates as low overall for the taxpayers of Danbury.
Thank you, Director Sandler. Thank you, Director Iadrola, and thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll yield before.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Rattell. Further questions? Mr. Tavrisak, is your hand up?
That's right. Yes, it is, Honesty Mayor. The only thing I, I'm personally, I think most of us feel that's very, very good program and so forth that meets much of the needs of the city. The thing that bothers me though is that the fact is that voters have not really had, I don't think, enough time to make any comments on this. So, I was just wondering, given the timeframe that you're talking about, would it be possible to extend the time for having amended or to extend the time for voter comments on this and then have a special meeting to have this vote that we're now considering? Because I just don't feel comfortable personally that we've given the voters enough of a chance to really make public comment and so forth. And people who made the comments today, I don't know how many days they had, but certainly there wasn't that much for the general public to make, make much of a opinion shown.
Thank you, Mr. Tavrisak. So, we, we are, the motion did include a ten-day period where we'll be accepting comments and then certainly if there's some stream or overwhelming thing that's in there, we'll, I'll appoint a committee here at the end to review them of the council and it'll be forwarded over and Taylor's gonna set up a specific SNAP twenty twenty at Danbury kind of email, so it'll not go to the normal email address for other comments. So, to try to get as much input as we can. But look, understand, this has been on the books since February, been ninety days. And, you know, people were supposed to vote April twenty eighth. So, they, if they've done their homework up until April twenty eighth, then they would have known that. We, you know, didn't move that date until the very last minute. And so I, I certainly understand and wanna take input. That's why we're gonna leave that period open. If there's something overwhelming that that subcommittee thinks should come back to the full council, they can do that. But at the end of the day, we need to move these projects forward, and I'm more in favor of always letting the public vote. I think it pass, would pass easily, but unfortunately, given, you know, what we're facing these days, I don't think that's gonna be practical. So, that's what sort of our, our thought on, or I know Councilman Cavo's thought on allowing this comment period that we leave them open. And certainly any county council member would share the comments with you. If you wanna read them, it's not a problem. So, that's sort of, we think, is, is giving us enough time. But really, you know, when you go in and vote, you vote. You don't, you don't comment. You just yes or no. Are you gonna do this? Yes or no? Unfortunately, you know, we're kind of stuck in a situation. We've gotta move on this because those kids are coming in August. They're gonna be here, whether we like it or not. Further discussion. Ms. Dennis was here.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to state that I absolutely support the bonding of this money out to address these infrastructure issues. I agree that it is unfortunate the voters will not have the opportunity to vote on this bond themselves, and that's only because of the pandemic. And in the best interest of public safety, I support the City Council taking this course of action. And I believe based on constituent feedback, while I was campaigning this past election cycle, the voters would pass this in a referendum if they had the opportunity to. And because of that, I will be voting yes to approve and passes bond that will address the infrastructure and school issues. Also, I don't know if I'm doing this appropriately, and I know it would be difficult with the virtual meeting, but I would like to ask for a roll call vote.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna do a roll call vote. Let's just with you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you for your comments. Further discussion?
I have a question, Your Honor.
Mr. Sheen Easie, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a more of a procedural question. I mean, because I, again, I, I'm also in favor of the ordinances as well. But if it passes this evening, will that allow the public works to start the paving process as ordering supplies? Or there, is there a grace period that we still have to wait for, for, for we can act on the actual ordinance itself? Do we have to wait that thirty days? Was that waived as well?
That's a good point. Can it, let me just have Mr. Pinter opine on that.
Okay, yeah, the, yeah, the, the ordinance will be effective upon your vote to adopt it. So, there's no thirty-day waiting period for this.
Which means Antonio can start paving tomorrow?
It'll be in front of your house around six o'clock.
He, he, he might be able to start paving, but not with this money because it's not been borrowed yet.
But again, to follow up, the goal will be going out with anticipation notes, correct?
That's right.
Yes, that's our process, Mr. Sheen Easie.
Okay, thank you.
And it's, as soon as he can gear up, he will be. Further discussion?
Your Honor?
Yeah, Mr. Visconti.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think we're, we're definitely headed in the right direction. And it's Mr. Tavrisak noted the time limit for the, the public. I think we're giving them the ten days now, but as you said a little while ago, this, this has been in the papers and so on and so on and discussed at, at the council level. So, there has been a lot of activity as to what, what the the whole deal is all about. I think, again, that we are, we're doing a great job. There's been a lot of work behind the scenes, and, and I know there's gonna be a lot more work behind the scenes, and I intend to, to vote yes on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Visconti. Further discussion, council? Further discussion? Yeah, Mr. Als.
Thank you. Along with my colleagues, I don't think you're gonna have any votes here.
Could you speak up just a little bit, Mr. Als? It's hard to hear you.
I apologize. Is this better, everybody?
Yeah, it's good.
Okay, thank you. So, along with my colleagues, I don't think you're gonna get any contention on the actual vote of bond tonight. I believe that a lot of us, it's a procedural thing. And I'm glad there's a ten day comment here, but personally, I feel more comfortable with those ten day comments ones before a vote. I understand the public may have had ninety days. I understand this is we all know a lot of people go into the voted booth, we're gonna be reading that bond for the first time there. And I just feel that, for those who were aware, they were under the impression they were gonna vote. If they got the council agenda yesterday, they had a little over twenty-four hours to make a comment. By, by no means is my intention or goal to delay this by any way. I was just curious, does the timing allow for public comment and a special meeting before the June? I think that would make a lot of us who have some concerns with the process and letting public participate in an easier manner, that would allow for that. And I sure would feel a lot more comfortable if I placed the vote after hearing from the public, not a vote that'd be binding and then the public.
Thank you, Mr. Als. Further discussion? Further discussion?
Mayor?
I, I lost you. Where are you, Mr.? There you are, Mr. Salvatore. Okay, I got you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Today, I can honestly tell you that I know how I wish to vote on this agenda item. Councilman Levy, it won't be abstained. As a matter of fact, if the referendum had occurred on the twenty-eighth as originally scheduled, I would have walked into the booth and voted yes for both questions. But instead, our country, our state, our city is in the grips of a pandemic that many alive today have never faced in their lifetime. It has changed our way of living. It has even changed our way of governing as well. Today, we as twenty-one members of the City Council will vote for whatever portion of the forty-two thousand three hundred and ninety-four registered voters who would have spoken through their vote in the referendum. Before the pandemic, I had no doubt in my mind that my yes vote would be backed up by a majority of voters in the city. But today, on May fifth, twenty twenty, I believe I know the will of the city's voters, but there's a seed of doubt in my mind. This stems from the fact that the pandemic has caused an economic crisis that leaves too many questions in the minds of us as elected officials, but more importantly, our constituents who are quarantined at home and are wondering how they're going to come out of this when things begin to return to normal. Voters have asked me via social media and emails how the approval of the bond will affect their taxes when the time comes to pay these general obligation bonds back. I can't answer them, and I believe that no one here could probably answer that because you don't even know how much of the bond you're gonna need to use to know how much is gonna be paid back. Mr. Mayor, I heard you're live at five. I love your lives at five, but I have to look at them after the fact. But I saw that on Monday, you actually announced that we would be voting to approve or reject the bond issue. And you had stated, because the City Council and myself want your voice to be heard, we're going to ask you to submit comments if you want for ten days. And then it was stated that then the comments could be taken under consideration if the City Council wanted to. And you said that you wanna make them feel like they're part of the pressure, the process, and make sure that there was transparency. Listen, I know the enormity of this pandemic and the fact that it's thrown every aspect of our lives into chaos. But what were our constituents think about the fact that we're gonna vote first and take their comments second? What would be wrong in allowing a ten-day comment period to start tomorrow and go through the sixteenth? And then call us back for a special meeting on the nineteenth after reviewing the comments? I have no doubt that the bond is gonna pass, but I just ask the question, is it right to put the cart before the horse and us vote and then allow them to comment? And what if, God forbid, they came back and said they didn't agree with this? So, that, I guess my question to you is, I heard you say earlier on that June second may have been okay, but what would be wrong about putting a ten-day period before and then have us vote on a special meeting twelve, thirteen days from now?
Well, yeah, first of all, just so we're clear, I just wanna make sure I encapsulate your comments correctly, so I understand what you're asking. We had multiple public hearings, multiple opportunities for people to opine on this from, starting from January till now. However, I think your comment is more in, in the, within the context now of COVID nineteen. In other words, that, that somehow that you did, that somebody's, somebody's heard, that somebody, that somebody may change their opinion based on the, you know, the pandemic and so forth. So, I think that, you know, June second would have been a very, very difficult date for us. We were on the phone yesterday with the School Facilities Unit. They wanna know that we've got the authority to do this before they'll do any plan. They are not working at full tilt, but in the interest of trying to give the public an opportunity to opine on this, we said at the very outset, we might be able to live with that. At this point, after our conversations over the last several days with SFU and with some other folks up, up at the Capitol, they want this information now. They want it as soon as we can get it. They don't wanna wait, and they're afraid that, given the fact that they're on a reduced work week as well and a whole bunch of things going on there, that they won't necessarily be able to review our material and potentially could miss a very important date. The other issue is the timeliness of paving. The other issue is the timeliness of paving and the fact that, you know, we, we step back until David goes out and gets the money for us to really do. We lose several months on the paving. So while I understand where you're coming from and I respect it, look, everybody's gotta make their own decision. Uh, I get it. Um, but, uh, at the end of the day, uh, those kids are showing up here in August and, and we've gotta be ready. I mean, there's just, it's not a if, it's not a maybe. Otherwise, we have overcrowded schools and all kinds of other issues. So I appreciate your, your thoughts. I didn't know if Mr. Idralla wanted to, uh, just chip in on that a little bit.
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor, I, I think, um, you, you covered it. Um, I, I think I counted, I was at twelve separate meetings, uh, discussing the school projects. Uh, we met with, uh, PTO people, we met with, uh, we had a public hearings. Um, we, we laid out the best plan that we can. Uh, we've communicated that plan with the state. Uh, we realized that the final plan may tweak a little bit based on these projections as they develop over the next couple of years, but, um, it's time to move ahead, um, to sit back and, and hope that something different will, will, uh, occur, uh, you know, could be problematic and what I'm finding just in my work, maybe somebody, uh, can, can kind of, uh, uh, support this also is, it seems like we're working our tail off, but we're getting so much less work done. And it's because we're just so less inefficient and the concern here, uh, just like with the Board of Education. I mean, I love those guys, they're my partners, but uh, we've been pushing them to get us some documents, um, because we know they're facing the same issue we're facing. Um, it's hard to do this stuff when you can't meet and you can't sit down and have these, uh, constructive conversations. So as we start emailing documents back and forth to each other, try to review them, um, it doesn't really replace that face-to-face contact that, uh, would make us so much more effective. So, uh, uh, I think we, we try to buy as much time as we can to make this a middle. We put the best package together we can to secure these monies. These monies are, uh, so important to us. And these reimbursements, I mean, our rates are pretty high. We can't miss out on getting this money. Thank you.
Just a follow-up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You did paraphrase pretty well. Um, it, it is, I'm not bringing back January or February here. I am bringing back COVID nineteen and the fact that our city, our state, our government, and you guys know I work at a hospital. My hospital has said, never said no to any of the money going out, and I can only imagine what the bottom line is gonna look like a month or two from now when things hopefully start to return near normal. We don't even think it's gonna be normal. I'm just curious about the cart before the horse. And so ten days or maybe fifteen days at the most, even before that June second is still, uh, too tight of a timeline. I just, I just wanna make sure I heard that correctly.
You heard what correctly?
That, I mean, even if, if we put the cart.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, okay, I got, okay, yeah. So, look, um, June second was absolute drop dead. Can we get it done? I guess we could probably try to push it and rush it through. Any little thing goes wrong on June second, you're done. But we now have an opportunity to do this tonight and get going a month earlier on a lot of these projects. And we should take, you know, I believe we should take advantage of that opportunity and get this done. Given a choice between having a vote and not having a vote, of course, I'm gonna defer to the vote. Once the governor moved it out of June into August, there's no way. I mean, it's not gonna work for us. And so at this point, uh, you all, all of us, including me, uh, are, you know, we have to make sometimes these decisions that don't make us particularly happy because we would rather have the public, you know, uh, opine. But we have had, as Mr. Idralla has mentioned, a number of, uh, public hearings, uh, public workshops prior, prior to COVID nineteen. The problem doesn't change though with COVID nineteen. It doesn't change. We still gonna have kids showing up in August that we're gonna need to find space for. We're still gonna have roads that need to be paved. We're gonna have bridges that need to be, be to be replaced. That doesn't change. So, um, you know, I think, uh, that this is probably the most prudent method. Is it, uh, asking for comments after the actual, uh, vote? Is that something wrong? No, I think you can always come back if there's an overwhelming, you know, uh, theme that we see through there, and I'm gonna point to committee of you all to review the comments. And that's something we can come back and look at in June and say, hey, listen, folks aren't necessarily, or whatever, but this will give us the green light to get our paperwork together, to get our engineering on board and to start doing the work that we need to, to do. So, um, I get what you're saying in terms of the, you, you would love to hear, so would I, you know, what you're feeling now, folks, after COVID nineteen's happened for six weeks, because it's horrible out there. And it's one of the reasons why David and I are working so hard to bring that budget in, uh, without a mil rate increase, because we understand what people are going through. Mr. Levy, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, your honor. Um, uh, you know, we, I hear a lot of talk about, well, can't we wait and put this off? Also, the comments about this is the biggest bond issue. It's, it's, people have to remember, we approve without going to vote a two-hundred-and-sixty-one million dollar budget every year. And we do it among the council itself, the legislative body. But we also have bonds that are being retired. And I wonder, uh, if, uh, whether Director Saint-Hilaire could comment on the impact on our, uh, debt service and the budget as to how it would affect the, um, taxpayers, uh, considering we're, uh, retiring a lot of debt and we would probably go back into the market with, uh, the advantage of a low interest rate. I wonder if, uh, uh, David Sinclair could comment on that.
Okay, Mr. Levy, Mr. Saint-Hilaire, please.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, Councilman Levy. Sir, I, I appreciate the ability to comment on that. Uh, we're gonna time it so that as bonds roll off, uh, we'll issue bonds, uh, to about the same amount. And that minimizes the impact, uh, in general. And then, of course, the bonds that we're rolling off, chances are we're at a higher interest rate than the ones that we're gonna be issuing. So, you know, at the end of the day, uh, we'll be issuing and paying less of a interest cost, have a lower interest cost. We're also looking at opportunities for refunding, as you know. Uh, we're, we're going out on refunding on two, uh, two phases. First phase is, uh, next week, we, which we hope we'll, we'll be able to execute the markets, right? And the next phase is, uh, probably in the springtime. So again, if the market is right, uh, we do that as these bonds are callable. Um, you know, and that makes them, again, uh, not taxable. Um, we can also, uh, call them when, in issue taxable bonds, but we chose not to do that. Um, but, uh, to, to the point of, uh, that was mentioned earlier, uh, regarding, uh, some certainty, and I know, uh, Antonio, uh, expresses, uh, that, and he didn't say the term, but I, I will express it because we're all sensing this on our, our regular daily calls that we have with each other. Is we're looking for some sense of certainty among a, a uncertain world here. And, uh, you know, we, we've offered, uh, deferrals and, uh, and that's taken, uh, that's really putting some pressure on our cash flow. And what that does in turn is it's, I, I have to tell Antonio, you have to wait until we have some certainty, Antonio, you know, because the, uh, the PW grant, which is a grant that the state says, all right, you know, you can use this for roads. But guess what? We're not gonna give it to you until June thirtieth of this year. So they tell us that July first, but we don't get it until June thirtieth. So we have to wait for the entire year. We can't touch it. Because the, at any point during that year, the state could say, guess what? You ain't gonna get it. That's happened to us several times in the past, and you all know it if you've been on the council for any more than one term. So I just, uh, have to, you know, uh, say to you that, uh, what concerns us right now, my biggest concern is cash flow to make sure that we can meet our cash flow in it. Right now, my projections are looking pretty good, but if we start going out with projects, usually we front the project, projects at this point in the year, so we can tell Antonio, okay, go ahead and start planning. I can front you for a couple million here and, you know, to get the things rolling because I already have bond authorization. And, you know, and we're gonna be going out in our July, you know, typical bond time of the year is when we go out in July. But right now, uh, I'm running out of bond authorization. You know, I'm going out in July for about twelve million, but that's on the old stuff. That stuff we've already done. So the problem is, I don't have any, I, I have very little left of new stuff uh, to, to go out for. And that means Antonio doesn't have much to, to, you know, uh, that he can, uh, go out and commit to. And, uh, but that's, that's what our concern is, uh, you know, for the folks on the board. And, and that's what the, the sense of urgency, not just the, uh, deadline with the state, uh, but, uh, we have bridges that have to be done. We have roads that have to be done. We have sidewalks. These are all projects that are typical in any, uh, CIP that we present to you every year. We're just grouping them all together and saying, this gives us the ability to issue as we see fit. And, uh, and, you know, so we're not just confining ourselves to one million or two million, but we can do these, um, and get a better price for them as we do them.
Thank you, Mr. Saint-Hilaire. Mr. Levy, you still have the floor?
I wonder if I could, uh, continue a little bit here?
Yes, sir.
Um, because, um, when we look at this, I don't think anybody's in denial that we've had three months to study the content of this bond issue. And, um, the public generally has had an opportunity to review it as well. Uh, nobody has pointed out any, um, inappropriate expenses in this bond issue, in the public, and certainly the governor in, uh, in, enabling us to uh, move forward on this, recognize the emergency that was, uh, at hand here uh, to, uh, move forward on, on the school projects and, uh, or, and as well move forward on the infrastructure of the city of Danbury. Uh, all things taken in consideration with interest rates as, as low as they are right now and the opportunities, um, the impact on the community itself. I, I will support this strongly and I encourage everybody else to do it as well. There, and nobody has suggested any shortfalls in this bond issue. I know that some people would like to wait, but waiting, we might miss a, a season of construction, which would be very harmful, and I don't know what we'd do with the increased enrollment in the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Mr. Santos, I think you had your hand up. Did you want the floor?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, your honor. Um, I understand the, the points that are being made about not wanting to wait. I don't wanna wait either. I plan on voting tonight the same way I would have voted at the ballot box, um, uh, the twenty-eighth. Um, but I, I do have, I mean, I am concerned with the fact that we were okay with the June second date, but, um, we're not now. And I get that we wanna give, uh, an open timeframe there, a grace period of sorts for people to opine on it, and having people's opinion is important, like you said, your honor. Um, but it does feel like we're doing it a little bit backwards. We're voting today and then we're giving them ten days, and I get it, we're gonna create a committee, a commission that will study the results of the, of whatever opinions the, the voters have. Um, I, I can tell you that people have reached out through social media, through, um, email, and, and there's varied questions, right? They, they're worried about what, uh, Councilman Salvatore has said about the impact of COVID nineteen on, on, on this now. And, and we do think that there would be, uh, an impact. Um, you know, an impact of what the unemployment rate is going to have on, on their own personal lives and, and does, is there a burden that they're going to have to take uh, as far as taxes when in the future? I will vote tonight, like I said, like I planned on voting at the ballot box, which is I will support this, uh, bond because, uh, as has been said, we do need it for our roads, we need it for our schools. Um, I just feel like we're, we're doing things a little bit backwards. We're given the opportunity to, to speak um, after the vote. It just, it doesn't make too much sense to me. I appreciate the opportunity for, uh, the public to speak. Um, I, I just think we should have done it back the right way. Um, and I don't think that ten days is gonna make that much of a difference. I, I definitely am against pushing this off any further than that. I, I understand the seasonality of paving and the students that are coming in, uh, the new school year. Um, but I do think that, um, having the opportunity to listen to the voters, uh, reaching out to them in different ways, because, you know, we are in a different time where people are, may not be reading the paper every day. Uh, where people may be getting their information in different sources. So, uh, making sure that we're getting this information in front of them in varied ways uh, gives them an opportunity to opine. Um, and then we can make our decision. Uh, I have no doubt that it's gonna pass tonight. I plan on voting for it, but I just wanted to make my comments, uh, public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santos. Uh, further, uh, comments? Okay, seeing none then, at this time, we'll, uh, call the roll. Um, I'm gonna do the roll call, if that's okay, because I don't vote. Um, and, uh, I may circle back and ask you for, for some clarity, so, or you just, if I don't hear you, because it's a technology. So, uh, we'll start with the A's, uh, Councilman Al, Alves.
Hi.
Uh, Councilman Bizet.
Yes.
Councilman Mike Esposito.
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Levy.
Yes.
Councilman Salvatore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stanley.
Yes.
Councilman Taversec.
Yes.
Councilman Fox.
Yes.
Councilman Priola.
Yes.
Councilman DiGiulio.
Yes.
Councilman Cabo.
Yes.
Councilman Rotello.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Visconti.
Yes.
Councilman Palma.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Knapp.
Yes.
Councilman John Esposito.
Yes.
Councilman Santos.
Hi.
Councilman Perkins.
Yes.
Councilman Shinisi.
Yes.
Councilwoman Camissa. And Councilman Malinaro.
Yes.
Okay. There'll be twenty-one, uh, hi and zero in the negative. President, can we have department report? Oh, wait, uh, committee to, uh, review the comments. Um, I'm gonna put, uh, Councilman Cabo, uh, Councilman DiGiulio, Councilman, uh, Visconti. And, uh, I'm gonna ask Taylor to, uh, help kind of formulate a summary for you guys to review. You can always look at the backup, it's still, but encapsulated in a document that you can read clearly, but uh, as soon as we can get the email address up. The president department reports.
Thank you, your honor. At this time, I move that we waive the reading of the departmental reports as all members have copies. The copy's on file for review with the Legislative Assistance Office as well as the city website.
Second.
What's made seconded by, uh, Mr. Rotello is discussion of the department reports.
Your honor.
Uh, yeah, Mr. John Esposito.
Thank you, your honor. I just wanted to, uh, extend my thanks to unit coordinator Sean Stillman for, uh, looking into a flooded property issue on Town Hill Avenue that I noted in his report. Uh, thank you very much, sir.
Uh, Councilman Santos and then Councilman Salvatore.
Thank you, your honor. Through, uh, you actually to, um, Director Ida Rolla, if I could, could you give us a brief, um, details, uh, of what is going on at, uh, Plum Trees Road, the construction area, and specifically to the clearing of the trees um, on the other side of, of the road there? Uh, it seems to me that we, I understand what, that we're having some construction at the wastewater plant and, uh, the animal shelter, uh, but just so that folks could know exactly what's going on, if you could give us some details, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, sure, Councilman. Um, we, um, uniquely, we have, uh, three good-sized projects going on in the area. Um, our Dog Pound Project was started, uh, last week and is well on its way. Um, as you, uh, can see, the state started their project, um, uh, which you guys were part of granting, uh, the easements for and, uh, uh, getting all that paperwork in together. Um, all these projects are sort of hitting around the same timeframe. And, um, as you probably saw, uh, we actually kicked off the sewer treatment plant project, uh, which is the first large piece of it, uh, which will deal directly with meeting our, um, our permitting requirements. which is the first large piece of it, which will deal directly with meeting our, our permitting requirements. That is one phase of a multi-phase project. So you're going to see a lot of activity over there. We are very, very conscientious of traffic impacts. I do want to tell you, because I know this is going to become an issue, is I have no control over the Newtown Road project. It is a state-run project, much like some of the other projects in town. We will work with them and we will try to input and exert any input that we possibly can on your behalf. But the project is a state-run project. We don't have much involvement in it. I am hoping and keeping my fingers crossed that this project will have much better success than some of the other projects, that they've hit some unforeseeable issues. So one can only be hopeful. But this one is a big project because it impacts our entire Public Works complex. And as you know, if you've traveled down that road, that intersection is a crazy busy intersection. So the traffic plan was well put together. And I think if they adhere to it, it should work out. I know they're going to be doing some night work to eliminate some real major traffic impacts. So we're going to keep an eye on it for you.
Yeah, thank you. I can, I can already tell you that just by them closing off Old Newtown Road and turning off the light, the traffic has gotten better there. But I, I look forward to that, the completion of that project and the improvement of that area there. Specifically more to Plum Trees Road, Mr. Ida Rolle, if I can touch base on that again. The clearing of the trees across the street from the wastewater treatment plant, is that because of the, the upgrades that we're doing to the facility?
Yes, we will be utilizing some old drying beds that exist across the street. And we, you know, we have some minor tree clearing for the Dog Pound, but most of what you're seeing is directly related to being able to facilitate some existing infrastructure to minimize costs.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Salvatore, I think you had your hand up, right?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just a thank you to the men and the women of the Danbury Police Department, the Danbury Fire Department, Danbury Volunteer Fire Department, EMS, our Public Health Department, Public Works, any of the frontline responders, including all the men and women up at Danbury Hospital. Nobody could imagine what we were going to see. And I just want to wish them the safest and best to get through this because although it looks like it's getting better, we do believe it's going to come back a little bit and we're going to have some peaks and valleys. So please stay safe out there, chiefs. Let your men and women know they're doing a fantastic job.
And thank you, Councilman Salvatore, for your work as a respiratory therapist. It's appreciated and noted the good that you do as well in the community. So good job. Any other, Mr. Malinaro?
Yes, I was just wondering what is going on with the property at the bottom of Rose Hill?
That is the, the environmental remediation of the Mallory Hat Factory, where the new Women's Center facility will be built.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Rotello.
Oh, yeah, thanks, Your Honor. I was actually going to bring this up under item 11, but I decided not to. But since Antonio jumped in and spoke about the commencement of the sewer project, the one that we voted a $120 million bond on, I, I do have a question about that. And it's not so much about the scope of the project, but if David St. Hilaire could weigh in just briefly and tell us how much the city has already borrowed against that ultimate 113, 114, whatever it happens to be. Thanks, Your Honor.
You're welcome, Mr. Rotello.
Yes, we borrowed $50 million in October. As I mentioned, we typically borrow in July, but there was an opportunity for, you know, the low interest rates in October. So we went out in October and we did a $50 million bond.
So that's 50 is five zero?
Five zero, yeah.
Okay, thank you, David. Thanks, Your Honor.
You're welcome. If I, if I could just add there, there's nothing funnier than to see your finance director come running in, hair on fire, saying, let's borrow now, we're going to save a ton of money. It's like, go for it. So anyways, it was an interesting day, but he got it done. Good job, David. Further.
Good for you, David.
Further discussion of department reports. Mr. Alz.
Mr. Mayor, just curious if you'll entertain some COVID-related questions you said at the beginning?
Yeah.
We could, and if it's, I don't think anything's aligned that I'm going to ask. Really, um, everybody's doing a tremendous job and I just want to reiterate what Frank said very shortly, so thank you for saying that very well, Frank. Mr. Mayor, I had a lot of constituents, and I believe social media, you probably had even more than us, really point out some challenges with the Rogers Park area this weekend. And I know maybe our hands are tied in certain ways, but I'd hate to see a spike locally because of people not following the rules. And we're all, adults have to listen and I, and I understand that. I think the city's been doing a great job, let me say that too. What, was anything done? Is anything can be done? Is it just that hard? Because obviously, we don't want to put our frontline staff in harm either by moving people. But at the end of the day, I feel like it is the responsibility of somebody to address overcrowded parks. Again, this is what was said to me, I've, from trustworthy individuals. Maybe it wasn't as bad as it sounded, but it, it really did sound like it was as bad as these people were saying, because I've heard from multiple. Any comments, is the city, clearly, I believe you are aware, but how will we mitigate this going forward?
Yeah, so we, we put that on our patrol list. We were out, particularly Sunday was the warmest day. And we expected that we would have a lot of people out. And it wasn't just Rogers Park. I drove around all over Danbury on Sunday just for, because I was going stir crazy in the house. And there are a number of block parties going on, picnics, things like that. But generally speaking, we will respond to anybody that happens to notice that, see that. We have Sean Stillman, Edwin, and Jeff Preston that are out driving around looking for these kinds of large groups of people. We try not to put the police in a confrontational situation. We try to de-escalate it and try to get people to move along. It can be a battle because the minute the cop car leaves, people kind of fill in the void again. We had big crowds at Terry Wild, we had big crowds at Bear Mountain. Richter was, the hiking trails were pretty busy too. So, you know, we're going to just keep, keep, keep at it, but it's hard. I mean, you know, it's, it's, I don't want, I don't want something to escalate where somebody gets, you know, in a physically confrontation. But on the other hand, like you say, you don't want somebody getting sick either. So we try to strike that balance. The chief and I talked pretty much all weekend about hotspots like that. Definitely Rogers Park probably will be again. And we just, we got to just stay on it constantly, remind people. We do find that it's, I'm not trying to cast aspersions on any age group, but generally, the younger people have a little tougher time dealing with the social distancing than seniors and other people. And, you know, it's part of that feeling of invincibility you have at that age. So it's hard. But then again, I don't want to see a bunch of arrests made because somebody was standing five and a half feet. But it was busy Rogers Park, there's no doubt about that. You're on point. We'll continue to put patrols down there. I asked the chief this morning to talk to all of the patrol shifts to remind them to break up groups, to encourage them to move along. We call it gentle pressure versus, you know, arresting people and stuff like that. And for the most part, 90% of people have been great. So we've just got 10% of the people. So we'll keep on it.
Thank you.
Mayor? Mr. John Esposito?
Thank you, Your Honor. Last I knew, the majority of the city parks, with the exception of Terry Wild, Richter Park and Bear Mountain were closed. Is that still the case or was that never the case or is that now, no longer the case?
The Rogers Park playing fields are closed. The, but you can't stop people from walking on the streets. And, you know, a lot of people do power walking and speed walking, even jogging through there. And it can get really busy. It, it can really, there could be a lot of people down there. The, we have other people that are hopping the fence, trying to play tennis. We have another group playing soccer on the, you know, hop the fence on the soccer field at the far end. That was an issue. So, you know, we are working as hard as we can to try to encourage people not to do those things. And a little bit of an issue we've also seen up at Richter Golf Course, although they've adopted some new policies that seem to have smoothed out some of their problems. So you're right, those are, Rogers Park is open, the streets are, but the facilities are not, I guess is the best way to describe it.
The playgrounds and such, yes.
People are using the playground like crazy, you know, we, the guys go down there and gals go down there a couple of times on the weekend. But, you know, it's hard. I mean, little kids and parents just don't understand the severity of it. And we're, we're just going to keep gentle pressure is the term I like to use. I don't, again, I don't want people getting arrested, but they've got to be warned.
Yeah, certainly not. We want the public to be safe. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Mayor? I'll get to you, Mr. Visconti, Mr. Tabersak first.
Is, is Ponte there still?
Yes.
Okay, could I just ask a question? First of all, I was wondering, first of all, I thought her report was very, very good in the beginning. Very clear. Was just one thing that I was concerned about. 58 people of the homeless are in the hotel there, a super eight. I was wondering if any of them have contacted the virus? And if so, what, what is the procedure for what you do if that has happened?
Well, we do have a plan currently. We do not have anyone residing with us that are infected with the virus, but we do have rooms set aside for isolation and quarantine. And there is also other locations that are recovery centers throughout the state that we can utilize if there is someone who's ill and needs medical treatment.
Okay, well, thank you. I think you people have been on top of this, that's pretty good.
Thanks, Mr. Dig. Mr. Visconti.
Thank you, Your Honor. I know we had spoken earlier regarding Rogers Park. And I thank both Mr. Esposito and Roberto for bringing up the subject. I, I have to say, the, the police department is doing their job down there. They're doing the best they can. And I realize that you want to do it in the right way. And I think we need to do it now so that we don't have to have the problems that we've had in the past all summer long or so on and so on. But they are doing the best job that they can down there. There was a lot of people. And I understand they want to get out and do their thing. So we're going to keep an eye on it. I know, I call you every once in a while and let you know what's going on. So that's what I'll continue doing. Thank you.
That's okay, it's my job. And we are going to bring in the other Edwin, the noise guy shortly. So as soon as we get a break, we're actually talking about snow on Saturday, so.
Yeah.
So we may wait a little bit on that. Mr. Shinaci, your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Just to follow up on what was said briefly about Rogers Park, you know, now that the Danbury Westners, that season has been canceled, is that safe to assume that the Little League and all the softball leagues will not be playing in Rogers Park as well?
Most of them have already canceled or are, are looking towards fall ball to, to, to pick it up again with the appropriate social distancing things going on. So you won't see too many organized leagues. There are any organized leagues that'll be playing there for the near future, maybe in the fall.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, before we break here tonight, I want to extend all committees, but also wanted to share with you that a wonderful woman passed away last month. Jean Natale's mom, Lydia Yaglinski, maybe many of you know Lydia, that has been active in civic affairs for, since I was four years old, running around and made the best cream puffs of anybody ever, anytime. And so we will miss Lydia and all that she brought to the table. She loved being engaged and advocating for her causes. And I just want to extend our sincerest condolences to Jean Natale and her family as they are grieving right now and let them know that we care for them and we love them. And so if we could give a moment of silence on behalf of Lydia Yaglinski, that would be greatly appreciated before we break. Thank you. Once again, Jean, we're very sorry for your loss. With that, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Rotello seconded by Mr. Shinaci. All in favor of German, give me a thumbs up. All opposed? We're adjourned, see you next week, everyone, see you next month.
Bye.
Thanks, Your Honor, thank you, Taylor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Taylor.
Stay safe, stay healthy.
Good night, everybody.